We're going to call this meeting to order. I'm going to ask Councilman Bill Brown to give the invocation. After the invocation, we're going to say, "Pleasure to lead you to the flag."
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this opportunity to gather, to discuss the city business. We're thankful for all those that have turned out to be part of this meeting. We ask you to watch over us and keep us safe during this upcoming storm that's coming. We ask you to watch over those that are on the road. Dear Lord, we ask you to... Everything we think, say, and do, be pleasing to thee. We ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pleasure to lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, as everyone is being seated, we've got a special presentation today before we begin the normal agenda items. I'm going to call on Councilman Jerry Davis for that special presentation. Councilman Davis?
He's here now. Thank you very much. I'm going to take this opportunity to present a picture to our former assistant city manager. She left before we got a chance to do it, so I'm going to ask her if she will come up front here. Now, just from the ML King Committee, I want to present this picture to you as a collage of the projects that we have at the ML King Junior Monument Park. And it's a picture of our certificate for being named to the National Register of Historical Places, for it presented to you on behalf of the committee and the church for your assistance in accomplishing our goal of building, constructing the Monument Park and getting on the National Registry of Historical Places.
Right, one more. No, shaking my head, yes, thank you. Our team. Thank you.
Also, I want to ask, I have one for the mayor, but we're going to ask Mayor Protem Curtis to come down and I want to present this one to him for the mayor. Again, on behalf of the ML King Committee, First African Baptist Church, want to present this picture of collage of the ML King Monument Project and a picture of the National Register of Historical Places that was awarded to First African Baptist Church on August 2019 for the sweetest contribution to the project.
Thank you, Curtis.
All right, we're going to move right into the regular agenda items. I'd like to get approval for the January 16th, 2020 City Council Meeting Minutes.
Mr. Mayor Protem, before we move into the regular agenda items, could I make a motion to table item 12 on the agenda?
Council, we have a motion to remove or table item 12 on the regular agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Councilman Brown. All right, at this time, I'd like to ask for approval for January 16th, 2020 City Council Meeting Minutes.
So moved. Or second?
Who's that? Councilman Brown, who's second? Councilman Gerald Smith?
That's right, that's right.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? They're approved. Approval for the bills over $3,000.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to pay the bills? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval for purchases over $3,000. Lance?
We have one purchase for the fire department. It's 35 sections of 50-foot, 1.7-inch, 7.5-inch fire hose and 20 sections of 50-foot by 3-inch fire hose. Put it out for bids. We budgeted $10,000 and the bids were a little higher than we hoped, but the low bid was $10,355 from Fireline, Inc. And staff recommendation is to award to the low bidder.
Council, you've heard the recommendations. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a special presentation by Ms. Artiphany Stanley, Municipal Operations Consultant with the Georgia Municipal Association of Safety Grant Award. Welcome, Ms. Stanley.
Thank you. On behalf of Georgia Municipal Association, GMA, it's my pleasure to be here today to present the city with a safety grant check. In order to be a recipient of a safety grant, the city has to participate in the GMA's Workers' Compensation Insurance Program or either Property and Liability Insurance Program. And the city actually participates in both. And they also have to have a safety coordinator designated, conduct at least two safety inspections per year, and have regular safety committee meetings, and also establish a seatbelt policy. And so I'm proud to say that the city was able to accomplish all those requirements, and you're able to apply for up to $10,000 safety grant on both sides. So you can get $10,000 on the safety grant side and then also on the liability side. So I'm here today to present a check on the safety side. The city was able to purchase some safety equipment for different departments. They got some extrication gloves for the fire department, three AED machines that would be placed in various city buildings. They also have breathing apparatus that they got for the waste treatment plant, some emergency lighting for engineering department trucks, and some cooling hats and towels for the sanitation department, so they could stay cool during the summertime. They also got reimbursement for their participation in the HR Express Program that was also offered by GMA. And so it is my pleasure today to present this check for the $12,243.79 to the city of Dublin. So congratulations on receiving the safety grant from LGR Events, which is a service organization for our GMA.
We'll leave this up here. I don't think we have enough room up top.
Thank you, it's too much.
Let me say, while our Mayor Protem's coming back, Ms. Stanley not only brought the award, but she's always worked very hard every year for us to receive this money, so thank you, thank you, Tia.
Is your internet slowing your business down? If so, call the city of Dublin for our fiber optic-based internet, 478-296-1008.
Next item on the agenda is a presentation by Ms. Elsie Stevens on behalf of Dublin Lawrence County Recreation Authority. Ms. Stevens?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elsie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I am Elsie Stevens, CPI with Christian Kelly, Thig Pan &amp; Company. I'm the auditor for the rec department. So I'm here this morning just to kind of give you an update of the water park, the final figures for the fiscal year ending June 30th for the water park. The reports that I gave you are the complete audit report for the Recreation Authority, but the water parks detailed is on page 11. So if you'll look at page 11, that will be the area that I will highlight. As of June 30th, the total assets of the water park and the proprietary fund was $152,462. The total capital assets net of depreciation is $2,139,616. Page 12 shows the income, the revenues. As of June 30th, total operating revenues were $157,000, and total operating expenses were $108,000 for operating income of $48,622. Do you have any questions?
Council, do you have any questions?
Is this the total or...
This is just through June 30th.
Okay.
So the water park opened in March.
Yes.
That's when the expenses started coming in, so it just goes from March through June.
So, but we operated a little bit after that, so that'll be included next time.
The next fiscal year, correct.
All right.
So the fiscal year runs the same as what the city does?
Correct.
From July 1st to June 30th?
Yes.
Perfect.
Any other questions? All right, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, item number six on the agenda is a presentation by Mr. Greg Chapman from Nichols &amp; Colley &amp; Associates for the city of Dublin's Fiscal Year 19 Comprehensive Manual Finance Report.
Good afternoon. Here to go over the results of the 2019 fiscal audit. That, as did with the rec authority, your fiscal year ends on June 30th, and it takes about six months for us to get the financials prepared and submitted and accepted by the state and the GFOA. So we've got all that handled, and I'm here to present the financial results. So at the end of 2019, June 30th, the general fund ended with just over $4.1 million, which is down about $94,000 from the prior year, but that does represent approximately three months of fund balance. And the GFOA recommends that you have 60 days, at least 60 days of fund balance, which is two months, so you have a month over that. So general fund's in a stable position. There was an increase in revenues and expenditures, but the good positive side to that during the year is some of that is grant funding. There was some CDBG money that came in last year, so by receiving that money, you have to spend that money, so expenditures and revenues both increased. There was a COPS grant, a fire equipment grant, and some increased LMIG funding and expenditures last year. And we'll talk about that a little bit more in a moment. Also included in your increase in expenditures was, as was just mentioned, the $140,000 for the seed money, I'll say, for the water park was also included in that. 2019 was a big year for capital spending for the city. There was a lot of capital improvements that were started and finished during the year. SPOS funding accounted for about $5.9 million of funding during the year. 1.8 of that was for the Jackson Street Plaza. 1.9 million of that was for the water park, and about, just over a million dollars for the police cars that were purchased and the other piece of public safety equipment. That $5.9 million of spending only resulted in just a little over $2 million of decreased fund balance in those SPOS funds, which, you know, if the general fund took a $2 million hit, that would be a big deal, but you have a SPOS to spend it, so the idea is to spend those funds, so it's not such a shock to have a decreased position in those funds. In addition to that SPOS spending, the city also spent a little over $719,000 from the T-SPOS. I think a little over half of that was for the Hillcrest Parkway Project, and $310,000 in LMIG funding, which was for paving approximately 15 streets, I think, during the year. So a lot of capital activity and investment in the community, so that was very positive for the year. And your enterprise funds, which are your business-type funds, like the water system, the gas, and telecom, they had a decreased fund position overall of about $318,000, and that was net of any transfers out of those funds. It netted out just $318,000. So I won't bore you with any more financial numbers, but I will tell you that our responsibility as your auditor is to give an opinion on the financial statements. Blake and his staff prepares the trial balances, and we use that information to prepare the financial statements. And our job as your auditor is to render an opinion on whether that information is materially correct. And I am happy to say that we did render a clean opinion, which our profession calls an unmodified opinion, but it is a clean opinion. So we did render a clean opinion on the financial statements. And we also, this year, had about $1.1 million of federal grant expenditures. Part of that was the hurricane reimbursement FEMA grant, the CDBG grant, and the COPS grant was the majority of that. So we do have to audit your federal awards, and I'm happy to say we have a clean opinion on those as well. Finally, as a part of our communications to you, we have provided the city with this in writing in a letter, but I will hit the high points of it, is that in that letter, we do disclose the significant accounting policies, accounting estimates, and disclosures that are in your financial statements. The most important financial statement disclosure would be note one that tells how you account for things. How do you account for your revenues and your prepaid and inventory and those types of things? So that's one of the most significant accounting disclosures. Accounting estimates, your most significant accounting estimates are your OPEA valuation and pension, that's your retirement benefits for your pension benefits plus your post-retirement health insurance. Those are your most significant estimates in your financial statements. And I like to say, you know, some numbers are hard numbers, cash, we can go to the bank and confirm those balances. We can go out and see how much inventory you have and look at invoices to compare those balances, but estimates are done by, you know, actuaries and experts in those fields, so those are considered estimates, and we review those assumptions in those reports and had no problems with those. I am pleased to say that we did get full cooperation from the city, not only from Blake's department, but we also have to work with the fire department, the police department, to get all the grant information and support for those types of things. We had no problems with anyone getting us what we needed. As a part of our audit, we do sometimes propose journal entries or adjustments to the financials, and the city agreed with any of those we proposed, and they have a copy of all of those And then finally, I will say, as your auditor, we are independent in regards to the city. We don't have any financial investments other than our audit. You know, our audit's the only service we provide. We don't have any other vested interests with the city as far as our family or our team members. Other than that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Council, you have any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your presentation, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
They have provided copies of the audit, and we handed those out, so if anybody didn't get one, we'll get you one.
With Georgia Farm Bureau Insurance, I can get auto, home, life, even banking, all in one place. Pretty convenient, if you ask me.
Always the home team, Georgia Farm Bureau Insurance. Visit us online at gfbinsurance.com.
All right, item number seven is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to continue and govern the city of Dublin Youth Council. Mr. Jones?
This is ordinance number 20-02. An ordinance by, excuse me, I'm sorry, by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to codify the youth council commission and to continue it as it operates effective on the date of this ordinance, to set qualifications for members of the youth council commission, to establish roles, duties, and responsibilities of the youth council commission, to set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes.
All right, at this moment, I'm going to close the city council meeting, open up a public hearing, and ask if there is anyone here to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance. If not, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? And I'll close the public hearing and then open back up the city council meeting and turn it over to council for action.
Make a motion for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Blake, recall the roll.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Chris Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Jerry Davis?
Yes.
For this basis.
Thank you. Item number eight is a discussion and/or action on a memorandum of agreement between the city of Dublin and Georgia Central Railway. Mr. Jones?
This is, it's basically our first agreement with them to negotiate, enter into an agreement later. But it's, if Mr. Joe Arbona is here to speak to y'all about it, it's a $4 million grant with a $4 million match to improve railroad between Macon and Savannah.
Mr. Mayor Protem and council members and the staff here, the city of Dublin, on behalf of the Georgia Central, my name is Joe Arbona. I'm the Government Affairs Assistant Vice President for Tennessee and Wyoming Railroad Services, Inc. We're the holding company of the Georgia Central, and I wanted to, first of all, extend a big thank you to the city for its support in working with us and getting this grant submitted. The, I've got a little presentation I wanted to share with you very briefly here. And basically, the Georgia Central is a short line railroad that travels from Savannah all the way up to Macon and connects in the Macon area with the Norfolk Southern and the Savannah area with CSX. And it's a railroad that provides connectivity to two large railroads that can go all over the country, out through connections into Canada and Mexico, and to ports all over the world. It makes our line a potential for having industrial development folks cite in that rail line. And one of the challenges that our rail line has had before we actually bought it, it had a lot of deferred maintenance for many years from previous ownerships. And one of the challenges with that particular rail line is that it couldn't handle some of the heavier weight railcars that the bigger railroads that we connect with can handle. And also, it can only travel about 10 miles an hour instead of a higher speed, which is usually expected by shippers. In order to try to get this project done, we looked at a program called, as you'll see up here, is the Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Safety Improvement Program called TRISI. And they have federal grants through the Federal Railroad Administration that usually require some sort of a matching program. And in order to get the line up to 25 mile an hour and be able to handle that heavier weight, we needed to do a project that we refer to as the Central Georgia Rail Corridor Competitiveness Project. And it's about an $8 million project. We were able to get $4 million from our company to use as the match, but we needed a city or a government agency to support us and actually put the application in on our behalf. And fortunately, the city of Dublin was kind enough to help us with this. And so we applied for that, and basically, before I go into the details on how we applied for it, this slide tells you a little bit about what we're going to be doing with the $8 million project, is mostly cross-tie replacement from Savannah all the way up to Macon, do a little bit of rail replacement, which is key for safety and speed. We're going to be doing some resurfacing and ballast, which basically re-strengthens our infrastructure. And then also some bridge reinforcement, which I'll go into in just a minute. What this will do is, of course, create a much more competitive rail line where people looking, industry who wants to set up in a site like Dublin would look at the rail line and say, "This can handle those heavier railcars and be able to travel a little bit faster." It also would improve some railtime travels and help, and this is something that's particularly important to the state, help move maybe some truck traffic to rail, and so help remove some of the pressure on state and county and city roads. The next slide goes a little bit into what, how we went about this process. We had a program that was announced, the federal program was announced very quickly. We had a very short time window to work on an application, and these applications are very complex. We were able to hire a firm to help us put that together and coordinated that with the city. We, of course, paid for all the costs of having that application put together. Basically, as a result of that, we put in an application in October of 2018, but for various reasons, the federal government took a long time to figure out who the winners were going to be. And as a result of that, the grants were announced back in July of 2019. The city of Dublin being the primary applicant, there would be, again, our match for $4 million, but the $4 million from the federal government would be made available once we go through a very long process of working with the Federal Railroad Administration on what agreements and things are needed. One of the things that we were able to do in our discussions with the Federal Railroad Administration for the past few months is get a categorical exclusion approved by the federal government that says that we can go ahead and proceed with the project. Also, we've received some comments from the Federal Railroad Administration about certain things on the statement of work that they want to see, and so we're working with them on that right now. Next page. These are some of the next steps. We basically have some minor revisions to do on the statement of work. We also confirming the project costs and schedule and project management, which is one of the reasons we're here. And of course, addressing the Federal Railroad Administration's sometimes kind of complex requirements for agreements and things along those lines. And so we also had to finalize and execute a TRISI agreement between the Federal Railroad Administration and the city, being the primary applicant. And then, of course, implement the project once all that is worked through. Once we get the approvals from the FRA, it will take approximately nine to 12 months to get the project done. One of the reasons why we're here is we wanted to make sure that we didn't burden the city with any kind of obligations when it comes to getting this project managed properly. We hired, or talked to you all about hiring AECOM, the firm that put together the application, they're very familiar with the project. They do this kind of stuff all the time around the country. And what we want to do is make sure that the city can accept this agreement that the Georgia Central will actually pay for the service from AECOM, take care of all the agreement negotiations, all those complicated factors, report to you all, let you know what's going on, but at the same time, unburden you of that. And so we'll work, provide all the information that's needed. And of course, council and Mr. Jones have reviewed the agreement, and we just hope that you can support that. And I'm also here to answer any questions, if anybody has any about the project or the agreement.
Council, you have any questions? All right.
Thank you again, really appreciate it.
It can be tough deciding what kind of vehicle you should buy.
But here at Dublin Ford Lincoln, we make it easy for anyone to find their perfect ride.
Perhaps your family is growing and you need some room for your next expedition. Or maybe you've heard about the all-new Explorer, and you've just got to have one.
You may have a lot of work to do and need a tough truck to help get it done. Or maybe you're just always in a hurry and need to go faster. Others call you customers?
We call you friends.
That's Dublin Ford Lincoln.
All right, what I'll do is y'all have heard the presentation. I'm going to turn it over for council for your actions.
Move for approval, this is Mayor Protem.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number nine on the agenda is discussion and/or action on resolution showing support for the Georgia Local Government Infrastructure Finance Authority Act. Mr. Jones?
This is resolution number 20-03, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Dublin supporting legislation for the Georgia Local Government Infrastructure Finance Authority Act.
All right, what we're going to do is turn it over to council for, if there's any questions anyone has on that. Turn it over to council for action.
So moved, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's see, number, item number 10 is discussion and/or action on a resolution to change the name of Grady Street to name Samuel Moore Senior Street. Mr. Jones?
All right, this is resolution number 20-04, a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to change the name of Grady Street, and it's just that portion which runs from Tailfair Street to Smith Street, to the name of Samuel Moore Senior Street, to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. And this, just to make clear, this is not affect all of Grady Street, but only that part that runs up behind Saxon Street School. The part, the section of Grady Street from Tailfair over to Academy will not be changed.
Anyone have any questions? If not, we'll turn it over to council for action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number 11 is a discussion and/or action... Item number 11 is a discussion and or action on a contract with Carter and Sloop Incorporated for the performance and preliminary engineering needed to apply for an Economic Development Administration grant for the construction of a sewer line and replace the line behind YKK and install a new line to the 257 industrial park. Mr. Jones?
We have a very long sewer line. It runs behind the YKK building, starts over toward 441, runs all the way over to the bypass near D-Next. It's a 10-inch terracotta line. Terracotta's just what you think of. It's like a clay pot. And they're in short sections, and they're fine when you first put them in. They were great at the time, but it leaks like a sieve now. The line is near capacity from the industries that are on it, and when it rains, it's full. And so, we can't add anything to it. As you know, we've been, over the last several years, trying to replace all our old sewers that are at capacity and make sure we've got plenty of capacity at the plant when anybody wants to locate here. So, this would not only, the money we're applying for, well, let me say first, this, the sewer line's going between, be between $3 and $4 million to upgrade. We also need to connect this sewer to the 257 industrial site, which is our prime best industrial site right now. And we were really looking at having to spend all of that money ourselves, hoping for some grant money. Mr. Tom Sloot of Carter and Sloop Engineering came to us with the chance to apply for some grants from the federal government, from the EDA, that may cover, we'll have to see, up to 80% of this cost. And Mr. Sloot, Charlie's here to answer, Charlie Bridges is here to answer any questions you may have. But what this would do is, would be to obtain a grant from the federal government to pay up to 80% of this, the cost of, you know, building this line. Like I said, this is a line we're going to have to replace sooner or later. It's not an optional thing. It's going to have to happen. And this is a chance for us to get a lot of it paid for by somebody else. This agreement, it, if you read the full agreement, it covers all the engineering, all the engineering services all the way through construction. But all we're really obligated to go forward with at this time is section one, sections two, and after two are optional for us. This will, Carter and Sloot will submit the grant. We'll see if we get it, and then we'll come back to ourselves, because we don't know what this, this grant's a real, been a real moving target. So, we're not sure exactly how it's going to work, how much it's going to be funded. If we get funded, we'll come back with you, come back to council with that approval and say, hey, we're approved, go forward. We got this much money, it's going to cost us X. How do y'all want to handle it? But we're not obligated to go past section one by approving this agreement. It specifically says in the agreement that from two on will be decided when the, we find out what's happening on the grant. Main thing is, if we don't get the money, we're not, we don't have the money right now to build this.
Mr. Jones, we're eligible for this because of Hurricane Michael and us being in that proximity, is that correct?
Yes, sir, because we were in one of the areas what, that got the official disaster area designation. And this is to help you, the money originally is intended to be, to help with resiliency. I believe that's what they're calling it, is that right, Tom? A resiliency grant? So that we're prepared when we get these massive influxes of water, the infrastructure to handle that. So, if, and like I said, Mr. Bridges, Mr. Sloot are here, if y'all have any questions for them.
Counsel, you have any more questions? I'll turn it over to council for action.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Number 12 has been tabled or removed from the agenda. Item number 13, discussion and or action on resolution to add services to the contract with Tyler Technologies. Mr. Jones?
I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Blake.
Back in 2018, you approved an agreement for us to enter into a contract with Tyler Technologies. At that time, we thought, thought it was a timekeeping piece. But that, at that time, the timekeeping piece was not figured into the agreement. There was a duplicated line in the agreement that we were able to go back and reappropriate that money to cover the cost of the timekeeping pieces. There will also be a residual amount of money after we purchase these timekeeping pieces. And we recommend looking at additional modules and spending the rest of that money on additional training costs for our employees.
All right. Anyone have any additional questions? I'm going to turn it over to council for their actions.
I didn't read the resolution.
Mr. Jones, will you read the resolution?
I don't, I don't have a resolution.
I'll read it. It's a resolution by the mayor and council of the City of Dublin to approve the addition of services to the contract services with Tyler Technologies Incorporated. Doctorate the City Clerk Executive Committee not documents necessary to add said services to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. It's the last page here. I can do it.
All right. I'm going to turn it over to council for action.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'm Glenn Register, and on behalf of all the employees at Hometown Supply, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for allowing us to serve you over the past 34 years. We have everything from four-wheelers and golf carts to cell phones and computers to flat screens and appliances. Come by today and let me show you what I will do for you. We have affordable payment plans to fit your budget. Just remember, if you can't do business at Hometown Supply, you just can't do business.
Next item on the agenda is citizen comments. Are any citizens in the audience that like to make any comments to council? If would, please come to the podium and state your name for record.
Thank you, sir. My name is David D. Moore. I'm the youngest son of Samuel Moore Senior. And I want to thank the council for our request to have Grady Street named after my father, Samuel Moore Senior. This is a great honor, and we really appreciate it. My family and I really love Dublin, as well as my dad. He really cared about Dublin and the people in Dublin. He gave a lot of people jobs. He also gave people a place to live, have the money to pay the rent. He also saved the principal of Saxon Heights from a fire. He was just a great man. I want to thank you again for your improvement. Thank you.
And could you, Mr. Judge, could you let everybody know when the ceremony y'all planned for renaming the street? Y'all have already got it planned up. Y'all are pretty confident we were going to do this.
Yes, sir. Well, the last time you and I talked, you mentioned Friday, the last Friday of this month. But we're looking at Saturday, if that's okay with the council and the city manager Lance. And I also want to thank you for your support as well, Mr. Jerry Davis, and also Gary Johnson, who is not here. They have been very supportive in this effort. So, we're looking at maybe Saturday at 12 noon this month, February the 29th. All right. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And we'll have that on our website and on our Facebook page soon as everything's set. We got it all planned.
Hey, thanks again.
Thank you.
Hello, mayor and council. Mayor Protem, Edwards, and everyone. Good evening, good afternoon. This, I'm back here again. I want to make sure that Councilman Brown's question there was answered from the last meeting. We gave you a packet here for the, about the response rate, and the response rate, you know, gives you for war one, two, three, and four. But of course, some of the, some of the wars in different tracks. But anyway, that's something for you to review. And the last, the next thing that I'm just going to do, I gave you guys a handout that says about census. And of course, you know, the census is going to be done online by mail and by phone. So, we just need everybody to get out and help participate. So, we're going to be giving you, gentlemen, a, some paperwork. Since y'all have wars, you can reach the people as well. So, we're going to be trying to go into the South Side and Scottsville area and probably by the mall area as well. So, but we do need everybody's support because that's more, more people, more money, as we have stated before. So, again, this information was generated from the ROM, ROM, which is the Response Outreach Mapper. And this information, I went ahead and snooped around, not snooped, but went and got information around the country to find out what that percentage, that the percentage rate of the ROM, I mean, of the, the low response rate is for South Side and Scottsville areas, like 30%. And then, other areas like 19%. That's the, that's the response rate. The higher the number is, the harder the reach areas. So, there are other areas like East Dublin have higher numbers as well. So, we just need to get out and help participate and make sure that people are informed. So, if you've got anybody that got any questions, that's pretty much it. So, we'll be visiting you again.
Thank you, Royce.
Thank you for your presentation and thank you for all the effort that you put into this. Anyone else like to make any comments to council? If not, I'm going to turn it over to council for comments. We'll start with Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Just want to thank everybody for being here. Want to thank the Moores for their presentation and glad we could, from an honor perspective, remember your father in that, in that regard. So, glad we could do that. To Mr. Chapman, Ms. Elsie Stevens, to the Georgia Central Railroad, thank y'all for your presentations, and everybody have a good afternoon.
Councilman Davis?
I want to thank everybody for coming. Want to thank the employees for what you do to help the city move along smoothly. Want to thank Mrs. Tiffany Stanley for the big check she presented us to the day, presented to us today. And hopefully, we can get some additional checks in the future. Want to thank Ms. Elsie for her presentation along with Mr. Chapman. And want to send some kudos to Mr. Royce Hall. He's our everything man here, but I want to specifically commend him on a great job of presenting at the GMA conference on last weekend. Did a great job. I want to thank Mr. Sloot and the Sloop Engineering for allowing us to pardon on a grant opportunity. And I also want to thank, just a reminder or notification that we made a presentation today regarding the MLK Monument and the First African Baptist Church. But it was an article in AARP covering the footsteps of MLK Junior. And Iowa Church was, the First African Baptist Church was noted second on that list. Through Dublin Tourism Council doing businesses, visit Dublin, Georgia in association with the MLK Committee. We received signs that's going to be actually put on those locations, the MLK Junior Monument Park and the First AB Church scheduled, they were scheduled to be erected today, but due to weather concerns, we had to postpone it until next Tuesday at 9 o'clock. So, if anybody is available at that time, you can come by and be with us for the erection of those signs. Thanks again, everybody for coming.
Councilman Chris Smith?
I just want to thank everyone for coming out. Thank every, different organizations for the presentation, presentation they made today. And just like Mr. Jerry said about Royce and also Mr. Benny Jones taught a class at GMA, he did an awesome job as well. So, we want to thank you for that. We just appreciate everyone for coming. It's been a bad weather coming, so I encourage everyone to stay inside and be safe. Thank you.
Councilman Griggs?
Thank you. I'd just like to thank everybody for coming and echo pretty much what everybody else has said, and have a great day, be safe.
Councilman Gerald Smith?
Ditto. Thank y'all all for coming and do be safe. Stay away from trees that look like they might fall, because they can happen.
Councilman, thank you. Councilman Jones?
Thank you. Mayor Protem, like echoed everyone and said, thank everyone for all their hard work, what you have done. And I also like to thank my fellow councilmen for approving that, that ordinance for the youth council and receiving the importance of our youth council. And the Moores, thank you for bringing that. And I'm a great honor, I actually worked for your father's company for a little while. So, we just thank you for all that you've done and everyone for all the hard work. Everyone be safe. About 2:30 to 5:00 it's supposed to hit.
Mr. Blake Daniels? Mr. Powell? Mr. Jones?
Just while we were sitting here, we, I got an alert that we are officially under a tornado watch now. So, just everybody be careful today. If you can get on home, stay in as much as you can.
All right. I'd thank everyone for their presentations they made today. I thank the police department for providing security. I thank the city employees for everything that y'all do day in and day out. I think it's a great thing to name a city off after a citizen, or a street after a citizen in the city. It sounds like there's a lot of, lot of ways this individual contributed to the City of Dublin. We appreciate everything they've done and appreciate the families stepping up to extend this legacy and recognize this person. So, it's a great thing to personalize a street that's, or a person that's meant so much to this community. So, I appreciate the city council passing that and for all those who brought it before our attention and everything as well. All right. With that, I stand adjourned.